Well, good morning, everyone. Welcome to this webinar and to the interview forum for the Assistant Superintendent Candidate, Dr. Stephanie Reinhorn. And this webinar will last for about 30 minutes. We have about 30 minutes. And since this is a Zoom webinar and not a meeting, the only video that we will see are those of the panelists. And the school committee members are the panelists. All right. And so we do have some questions that were submitted in advance. And I will be asking those questions. And if you have additional questions, if you could please use the chat feature on the side. And I'll take a look and see if we are able to fit in those questions. Okay. Let's get started. Stephanie, please welcome, first of all.
Thank you.
Would you please tell us about your background and why you're interested in the Assistant Superintendent position in our district?
Sure. Thank you, first of all, for the opportunity to be here. It's a pleasure and a privilege. So in terms of my background, I started my career as an elementary teacher, and I worked in a range of settings in public, private, international, suburban, and then urban. And after I'd been in elementary classrooms for about nine years, I had the opportunity to move to middle school math, which I was very excited about, and I did that for a couple of years. And when I think back on this time as a classroom teacher, I realized that this was, that the same things that drove me then, which was the opportunity to provide for the learning of all children, are the same motivators that drive me now. And it was different feedback then. Like, I remember being in the classroom and you had those days where you had a student who got through a problem they didn't think they were capable of. And that was the kind of moments that fed you as a teacher. Or, you know, those kids who you could see in their eyes that this was their safe place, and this was a place they felt valued. And now, as a system leader, it's still crucial to be in classrooms, because it's those moments of watching children in their learning that remind me of why I do what I do and refocus me so that those students and their learning is my compass. So after I had been in the classroom for just over a decade, I was recruited to become a district math coach in the Boston Public Schools. And during this next phase of my career, I was a math coach. And then I was a director of adult learning in one large urban middle school, where I was a member of the administrative team in that role. And my work during those years was at the, you know, at the adult learning level. And I was working with teachers and coaching. I was leading our administrative learning walks, running professional development, spending a lot of time with teacher leaders so that they were prepared to run data retreats and professional development and run meetings. And that work, I realize, represents another key motivator for me in my work, which is the relationships among colleagues. Everything I was doing was built on being able to build a culture of trust and collaboration between me and my colleagues and among them, so that they had trust for each other. So, you know, you don't start off with that trust. Like, I do remember those moments when I first would walk into teachers' classrooms, and you could see the nervousness, and you could see that it made them worried that I was in the room. But over time, they came to realize that I was there as a support and that I was part of their team to bolster their work. And they invited me into their work and into their planning. And I still see that as an important underpinning of my work today. After I had been in schools for about 17 years as a classroom teacher and a coach, I was being asked to apply for principalships. And there, in two different schools that I had worked in, was being recruited for that. And I made the decision to go back to graduate school. And that's when I went back to work on my research doctorate with a concentration in K through 12 administration, policy, instructional leadership, and practice. And my research focused on teachers' experiences in schools, particularly their professional learning. And I studied, among other things, the supervision and evaluation process in Massachusetts prior to the new evaluation process and after the new model was adopted. During this time, I was also invited to work with a group of colleagues at Harvard, teaching and facilitating the practice of instructional rounds, which you all have heard about as we've been using this practice in Northborough, Southborough. And this gave me the opportunity, it was really a gift, because while I was in graduate school and taking classes and doing research, this kept me tightly connected to classrooms and to schools, both with the schools that came to Harvard to work with us, but also we went out and worked in schools and school systems across the US and Canada. I realize, when I think back, that I was still working on all of the same issues, and still children were at the heart of the issue. But now I was looking at it from a systems level. I was looking at it and working with the school systems on how you take improvement to scale, how you grapple with issues of equity and coherence from a system level and make sure that we are providing for the learning and growth of each and every child. So whether it was working with large districts of over 140 schools and working together with their leadership teams, or working with a single high school in Western Mass that I've worked with for the last several years, we grappled together with the strategic planning, the problem identification, and then how to engage teachers with those problems and then strive for equitable outcomes. So why am I interested in this position? In recent years, I really became acutely aware that there were some things missing in my professional life that I didn't, it didn't feel complete. And there were really two things. The first was that I really deeply missed being part of the community in a consistent way. I missed the consistent relationships with colleagues and with families and all that came with that. And the second thing was I missed the continuity of the work as well. I missed going beyond the planning into that messy and complicated phase of implementation and seeing work through. And even in my long-term consulting jobs, I'm acutely aware of the fact that I am still one step removed from that implementation phase. So, you know, those two components are what have driven me to want to be in this position now, where I am ready to move away from the consulting work and fully commit myself and invest in this district for the future. So, you know, finally, I would just say that throughout my career, I have worked in a lot of different places, and I have always sought environments that place the whole child at the center of the work, that strive to be equitable and inclusive environments for all children and all families, and that foster and prioritize a culture of collaboration and continuous learning. And in the last two and a half years, as a long-term consultant with the district, I have found all of those things in Northborough, Southborough. And it's, you know, really been a pleasure to start to get to know the work in this district. And it would be a privilege to be able to continue to collaborate with all of you and see that work through and support it as it goes into the next phase of work.
Thank you.
Sure.
Now, Stephanie, as a consultant, you have worked with some of us already. Please share how you envision your role in working with the leadership, changing as you shift from a consultant to an Assistant Superintendent?
Sure. So I think there are a few things that shift. One is what I was just talking about, which is that as a consultant, you know, you're partway in. Like, you're, and even in a long-term consulting role, there are a lot of things that I have learned a lot about in the district, but I'm acutely aware that it's just the tip of the iceberg. You know, that there are a lot of aspects of the work that I have not been part of and that I would become part of, and I would need to learn a lot more about and engage with and dive into. So that's one aspect of it. Another is that I think, as a consultant, you, it is often your role to push people and sometimes push them into uncomfortable spaces and sometimes push harder than maybe folks within the system are able to push. And that is a role I have sometimes played. And so I'm also aware that if I were making the shift from consultant to Assistant Superintendent, that my voice in the room, if I'm in a meeting, has I play a different role. And I am then part of the authority structure if I'm an Assistant Superintendent. And so I'm very aware of the fact that the contributions I might make would be heard one way as a consultant and heard an entirely different way, even if I said the exact same thing as an Assistant Superintendent. So that would be, you know, something that I would be thinking about and really taking into account with that sort of a transition.
Thank you. And you've had the opportunity to observe our district for some time. What suggestions might you have for improvements in differentiated learning with respect to challenging our most advanced students?
So, you know, I think that the strategic planning process, which I have been able to be a part of and to help lead over this past year, has helped us to take stock of where we are and to begin to dig deeper into what the data shows us about where we are. And, you know, differentiation at all ends for our most, you know, to challenge our most advanced students, to support our students who need extra support, is an enormous challenge in schools and in school systems. And probably lots of parents are recognizing some of these things as they are trying to support their own children at home right now, that, you know, teachers are faced with a wide range of learners, even if they're in a leveled classroom. Like, even if they're in, for example, an honors high school class, there will always be a wide range of learners within that room. So I think this is something that we know we need to continue, you know, to work on. And the data shows us that we do, in our survey data and other data. I think that a lot of what we need to do is we defined, as part of our process, a vision for what the portrait of a graduate, our ideal graduate would look like. And we now need to backtrack to say, well, then what does learning and teaching have to look like in order for us to achieve that goal? And so in some cases, there's lots of great things happening. And in other cases, with potentially some of our most advanced learners, we might ask ourselves, you know, if we said that we prioritize critical and creative thinkers, taking a look at what's happening in our classrooms and asking, are we providing enough opportunities for them not just to know the content, but to think creatively and critically about the content? So I think there's still some assessment to do on the instructional side now to match the vision, to then say, is it an issue of pathways and courses? Or is it an issue of instructional opportunities within the pathways and courses that currently exist? And then to support that.
Thank you. And just to add on to that, are there any specific opportunities or areas for growth that you envision for Northborough, Southborough Public Schools?
I think, you know, I think there's always areas for growth. And part of what I love about this work is that we, until we can say that every child is walking out of school having reached their fullest potential, we've got work to do. And that's a really high bar. And so there is always work to do, which is part of what I enjoy. I would say that we need to think about differentiation in that, like, still talking about that area, we need to think about it in multiple aspects. We need to think about differentiation of access and differentiation of our outputs. So do we have different ways for students to access the knowledge or the skills that they are trying to develop? But do we also have different ways of kids demonstrating what they know? And I think that we probably still have some work that we can do to increase the degrees of opportunities on those two ends of access and differentiated ways of demonstrating what you know in the classrooms and beyond the classrooms as well.
Okay. Thank you. Would you please share with us a time where you had a vision and took that from conception to completion?
And so I think I'll use an example close to home, just, which is, I'll talk about the instructional rounds work that we've done in Northborough, Southborough, because you know a little bit about what that has been. And I can use it to illustrate a few things that I think are really important about taking anything to fruition. So the instructional rounds work, as I entered into this work with the public schools of Northborough, Southborough, I had lots of ideas, having done this work in many different places, and a vision of where it might go. But I really believe in any work, that the vision, as much as you need a leader to have a vision, it's only as strong as you can make that a shared vision. And so the really initial work that we did now, you know, almost three years ago, is we had a team, which is another fundamental building block for me of any of this kind of work, is that one person can't take any vision forward, that we have to have teams of people that bring different perspectives and expertise to the work. So we had a leadership team that was going to be leading the instructional rounds work. And one of the first things we did is I supported them in articulating a theory of action and in saying, what are we trying to accomplish? We need to get clear about why we're doing this work. And if we do it well, what would we expect to see? So being able to articulate, if we do this, then we would be able to see that. And we spent that time doing that with the leadership team. But we then took that to the bigger leadership team, you know, that was about 75 to 80 people, that includes all our teacher leaders, and then got them involved in saying, why are we doing this work? What are we trying to accomplish? So building that shared vision and building that shared sense of purpose. So that's a really important part. Another is that taking anything forward effectively has to mean that it's going to be sustainable and it's going to be integrated so that it's actually supporting the daily work. And that's been a journey with the instructional rounds work, not surprisingly. A, it takes patience, because there is more professional learning and sort of professional activities that we wish we could do than there is time and resources. And so we have to have a systematic, patient approach to, you know, going step by step, building the capacity, building the knowledge. And so it's been, we've been saying all along, it's a marathon, not a sprint. And step by step, we're going to build our skills around this, and we're going to build knowledge around this, and it will carry us forward. And in terms of the integration piece, making sure that it was getting more and more tightly tied to the ongoing improvement work of the schools. So helping each school to see, how is instructional rounds a tool to help move the work in my school? The other thing that I can illustrate from this example is the importance of data as we continue the work. So if we start with a theory of saying, if we do this, then we expect to get this result, then we need to have ways to measure, how are we doing as we go? And so we have, every time we bring the teacher leaders and school leaders and district leaders together, we always ask for feedback. We've done surveys as we go, and we've been looking at the improvement plans of the schools and how those are changing over time. And then we use that data to continually adjust the work. And so we bring that leadership team back together and say, here's what we've learned from the data. How does this help us think about what next year brings? So I would say that this is not work that is completed, but it is work that we have accomplished a lot. And we have built a lot of skills and a lot of shared language and a lot of capacity among the 80 or so folks who have been most deeply involved in the work so that they can then bring it into their schools and we can figure out what's the next phase of this work and how do we use those skills and build from this?
Okay. Thank you. And please share with us, how would you ensure that you create effective relationships in our organization?
So, you know, I talked about this a little bit at the beginning, but I think relationships are everything. We can't get the work done if we don't have a foundation of trust and collaboration to build on. And I think a large part of building those relationships comes down to investing the time and creating the systems and structures that foster the relationships. So I think that starts with, you know, if I were the Assistant Superintendent, part of what I would want to do in the early days of the job would be to spend time meeting with people, having one-on-one meetings as part of the entry process to continue to learn and listen and understand. And I think being a good listener is a huge part of building those relationships. In addition, I think, you know, having systems of feedback and support is part of how you build the relationship so that people feel that there's a two-way conversation, that they have ways to give feedback and to get feedback, and that with feedback comes support. And I think the thing, the other thing I would say, just, that's a kind of baseline important thing for me is, I just really believe that you have to treat people with integrity and respect and decency. And I think that when we keep that at the core of how we interact, that and another premise that has been so important to me throughout my career is that I operate with the assumption, and this is especially true because I spend so much time in classrooms observing, but I operate with the assumption that people are doing their best, that most people are working to the best of their ability with the best of intentions. And if we operate with that assumption, I think that's a really important starting point for building our relationships.
Right. Thank you. So in your prior experiences, it looks like you've been in a lot of diverse urban school districts. Could you please share with us, how does your experience, your prior experience, translate to our district?
Specifically in terms of diversity? And, so I have, you know, I've been in a wide range. Like, I started my career in suburban districts much more similar to Northborough, Southborough. And then I spent a big chunk of time in the Boston Public Schools and in Cambridge. And I think, so first of all, I think we also, we have data in the Northborough, Southborough schools to say that the school system is becoming more and more diverse. And I think that's important to realize in terms of, you know, ethnic and racial backgrounds of our families. But I also think that one of the things that I learned and appreciated coming out of those experiences is the power of diversity and seeing that as a strength. And seeing that the differences that we, that whether it's our faculty or our families or our students bring to the work are our strengths. So often, we see diversity with a deficit lens of what we need to make up for because of the differences. And I think that my experience working in really diverse environments has given me the opportunity to see that there's strength in that diversity that we need to capture. It's also given me a lot of opportunity to think about and work directly on, how do you make, so two things. First, how do you make an environment welcoming to all? And not, you know, not just saying that we welcome all, but actually seeing that all feel welcome and all feel equally represented in that environment. And I've, you know, spent a lot of time working on that directly and thinking about that, but also feel appreciated and understood and that they have a voice. And I think it's more than just saying that we're ready to listen, but it's actually, in my experience, we have to invite and create the opportunities so that we hear all the different voices and not make the responsibility on people to come forward. But it's our responsibility to create the opportunities that pull people forward and into the environment.
Thank you. Would you please share with us what your vision for organizing district-wide curriculum looks like?
So, you know, it's a huge topic. I mean, I think that there is a lot that is in the Northborough, Southborough schools that is already in motion and really strong in terms of curriculum and instruction. And in the strategic planning process, I think we have had a lot of conversations about places that people want to take stock of where we are, what materials and resources we're using, and making sure we have parity in terms of the ways those resources are being used in different areas, both horizontally and vertically, across grades and pre-K through 12. And seeing the connections between the resources. So if I use the example of social emotional learning, there's a lot of different resources and curriculum that are being used in our schools. And one of the things that came out in the strategic planning process is that it's a time now to take stock of those and say, okay, how do these different resources work together? Or do we need to make some decisions to have greater continuity and greater connections, again, both horizontally and vertically? And I think part of the work of doing that is going to be, again, about bringing the right teams of people together to have those conversations, because there's a lot of knowledge and expertise. It's going to be about using the curriculum leaders and the school leaders to bring the right people to the table, to take stock of where we are, to look at the ways other districts and other systems are approaching some of the same areas, say what is working and is important to keep, and what tweaks do we need to make or what decisions do we need to make to move forward? But to have some systematic processes for that kind of review and advancement.
Thank you. Greg, did you have a question that you wanted to ask?
Sure. I just want to let you know that my English Bulldog is in the background snoring. So, just a fear of snoring, I apologize. So Stephanie, this position is an essential position for the public schools of Northborough and Southborough. It's pretty expansive. Do you think you're prepared to take on this role? And, you know, what are some of the experiences you've had outside of consulting with us? Your work at Harvard, can you bring to the work of Assistant Superintendent?
Sure. So, you know, I think that I feel very ready for this, at the same time that I'm very aware of the, as you said, it's a big job. And I think for anyone moving into any position, whether it's a position they've done in a different system or not, there's a learning curve, and I'm excited about that. And it doesn't, you know, that, to me, that's part of what you take on. In terms of my preparation for the role, I feel like my leadership experience, you know, started in the Boston Public Schools, where I was really a key member of the leadership team in this large middle school and doing all of the sort of school leadership functions. You know, we functioned as a team. So I was doing scheduling, I was doing staffing, hiring, working on the budget, school improvement planning, all of those school leadership functions. And then in my work at Harvard, in more recent years, I have been chairing the Instructional Rounds program at the Harvard Graduate School of Education for over the 10 years now. And in that work, I've had to do the work of coordinating the different teams that contribute to that program. So our finance team, our enrollment team, our marketing team, our operations team, and our learning and teaching team. And making sure that with the expertise that each of those leaders bring with the folks they work with to the work, that the work is happening in a way that takes us toward our vision and our ultimate product, which is the learning and teaching. And so I was, you know, overseeing and connecting and coordinating and have been coordinating all of that work and making the difficult decisions that come along with that, whether, you know, the really difficult, the most difficult ones often have to do with the human side of things and making the difficult decisions when, you know, like, I had to decide that someone was not going to continue in the role that they were playing because the quality of the work was not meeting the standards that we needed for the, it was not in the best interest of the institution or the program or the learners. And so having the difficult conversations and doing that work to keep to keep the team together and yet let someone go from the team. So that's just one example, but yeah, that's helpful.
Thank you.
Stephanie, if you are appointed to this position, would you explain what, what you would do with your other consulting projects?
Sure. And I am ready to walk away from my other consulting projects. There's actually a group of people who, for the last several months, I have said to them, maybe, I have said, I have to wait. I'm in an, an application process. And if I get the job, then I will tell you who else I can refer you to. And if I don't get the job, we can talk. But I have been saying that now for months to a bunch of different people and that's, you know, what my stand is. I, this is a big job and I want to be all in. I want to be able to fully invest and commit and, and be present in the work.
Can I ask you specifically about your, your faculty, faculty chair at Harvard?
Sure. And so that's a tiny bit more complicated because of COVID nineteen. Because we were supposed to be holding an institute next week. And as you can imagine, we had over a hundred participants with about fifteen teams from all over the country and all over the world from Puerto Rico and Canada. And that's not happening next week and is postponed to later in the fall or winter. So that's a, a, a single commitment that I need to, would need to work with you, Greg, to figure out how to navigate and, you know, follow through with my commitment to that group of people that are enrolled in that program.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I would, I would just add that just from the Northborough, Southborough side of that, two of our schools in Northborough and Southborough were going to be hosting visits for that institute. And as part of that work, they were also going to be sending teams of teachers and administrators to a portion of the institute for free as part of the work of hosting. So I was already sort of working on, there's, there's lots of opportunities in that. So it, I, I was really excited about the opportunity for some of the schools in Northborough, Southborough to host for that institute that would have been next week. So I'm sad that that is not happening next week.
All right. Thank you, Stephanie, and thank you everyone for participating in our webinar today. Those were all of the questions that we had for this morning. And as a participant, please remember to go on to the feedback link that was provided so that you can provide us with information about today's webinar. All right. And thank you all very much. And do we have to go out of session as a school committee meeting?
Thank you, everybody.
Yes, can I just ask, can I ask, before we just wrap up Heather? And one of the reasons why we were called into session is to see if there are any further questions from the committee. I don't know if there are any outstanding questions from the committee members. Okay, it looks like there are none. So, and Paul Bucka?
I'm sorry. So just on that, that last topic about the faculty chair at Harvard. You know, I certainly understand if there's a single commitment that you'd like to honor. But I don't know that that answered the question completely. Do you intend to continue to hold on to that faculty chair position? And if so, how time-consuming a position is it? Or are you going to walk away after you honor that one commitment that you've made?
So, you know, that's something that, so first of all, I think I should explain that the type of faculty position that I have is quite different than sort of a typical, I'm, I'm a faculty in professional education, which is quite different than sort of a typical faculty of the Graduate School of Education. I have no committees that I have to participate in. I have no classes for under, for the graduate students that I'm required to teach. I have no responsibilities to participate sort of in the ways that the average faculty member does. My sole responsibilities are to the instructional rounds program and these institutes. So the, so the time commitment is, is significantly less than if you talk to sort of your average faculty member at, you know, at, at this Graduate School of Education. And, and really is like in the years when I've been able to put that on the front burner, I can expand it and, and I can contract it, right? In choices that are made about the program and, and where we take the program. I think that's something that I would, you know, like I do have this single commitment and then I would want to discuss, you know, with, with Greg and with all of you, what are the pros and the cons for the district? Of whether my affiliation with Harvard, if I was able to contract it in a way that it was tight enough to be sustainable and feasible, is there a positive for Northborough, Southborough in terms of the benefits to the district, in terms of the networking and the connections and the learning that I'm able to bring to the district from that? And that would be a conversation I would want to have with you all. But I guess I would say the bottom line is, I know how big this job is and I don't want to be overwhelmed. You know, I don't want to take on more than I can handle and I don't want to be spread too thin. I want to be able to be fully invested and fully committed in the work that I'm doing at Northborough, Southborough Schools.
So. So, um, thank you. Again, thank you, Stephanie, for your, your time. And we will need a motion to adjourn.
So I motion for the region to adjourn.
I'll motion for Northborough.
All right, Dan, you're, you're it.
Second, second for Northborough.
And I don't think we were in session, right?
You weren't, you weren't. And then just a roll call vote.
All right, for region, Kathy, yes. Dan?
Yes.
Joan?
Yes.
Paul Bucka? Paul Desmond?
Yes.
Kathleen Pletchko?
Yes.
Donna Shay?
Yes.
And is that it? Yep. The region's done. Oh, we did, everybody, sorry.
No, I'm not region. I was going to do Northborough.
Oh, you can do Northborough, okay.
For Northborough, Keith, yes.
Joan Frank for Northborough, yes.
Kelly?
Kelly, yes.
Lauren? Looks like we lost Lauren, okay.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Stephanie.
Thanks, Stephanie.
Thank you, everybody. Thank you.